...on the city of Glendale's Facebook and YouTube platforms and on the city's own TV station, Glendale Channel 11. Face coverings are encouraged, but not required. We do request that all attendees maintain some form of physical distancing. If you wish to speak on an item that is on the agenda, please complete a gold-colored speaker card and give it to the police officer in the back of the room. If you submitted a speaker card and indicated that you wish to speak on an agenda item, you may make your way to the podium after your name is called. We will be allowing three minutes for each speaker for all agenda items. If you wish to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, please complete a blue-colored speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. The citizens' comment section for non-agenda items is at the end of each voting meeting. Thank you for joining our Glendale City Council meeting.
Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of August 10th, 2021. This meeting is called to order. Roll call is not necessary. All members are present, if you would take note of that. I am at the opportunity of being the mayor. I'm going to do something a little different than normal. I'm going to ask if everybody would stand, join with me in a moment of silence for one of our officers, Officer Durham, who succumbed to an illness last week. And I'd like to take just a little bit of time and show some respects, and then we'll move on with the meeting. Our next two items on the agenda are the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight will be from Pastor Emmanuel Allen of Breakthrough Life Church. Gentlemen, if appropriate, if you're wearing hats, please remove. If everyone would please again stand for the invocation. And then after the invocation, please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Allen.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, welcome back to City Hall. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you. We give you name, honor, and glory in this city. We yield to your leading direction and wise counsel for our great city of Glendale. Give our mayor and city council the grace, the wisdom. Give them fresh ideas, innovation, to lead our city into prosperity, strengthen the unity of our city, and download the necessary blueprints that we need to build a city of peace and justice for all. Let us be that city that is set upon a hill that cannot be hidden, a city of hope, a city of blessings, a city of courage. Let this be a year of economic recovery, and let us be intentional in our endeavors for the longevity of our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Allen. Everyone join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next up, the agenda on the agenda is a consideration of minutes from the June 22nd, 2020 voting meeting, councilmembers. Have you any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the June 22nd, 21 meeting?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the minutes of the June 22nd, 2021 voting meeting.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the minutes. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Appears ayes have it, do have it, the motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda and consent resolutions, items two through 21. Before I go any further, I had a couple requests from a couple of the members. One item wanted to be, what did you have?
Just one item, Mayor, item 20, and there is no discussion required. Simply pull it off for a separate vote.
For a separate vote, okay. And you had?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted the presentation on number 25, please.
On item 25, okay. Okay, so if we can go ahead and get items two through 21 and item 21. Ms. Bauer? I guess you don't have to read that, do you?
Consent resolutions?
Okay, what's that?
Do you want me to read consent resolutions?
Item 20?
Oh, authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Norwood Equipment LLC for heavy-duty fleet parts, service, and accessories.
Okay, and you want to go ahead and do the items 22 through 26?
Resolution number R-21-74, resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting duties and responsibilities for the Government Services Committee. Item 23, resolution number R-21-75, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of an agreement with the state of Arizona Office of the Attorney General and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the fiscal year 2022 Victims Rights Program Award, AG number 2022-031, in the approximate amount of $5,422 on behalf of the Glendale Prosecutor's Office. Item 24, resolution number R-21-76, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of an agreement with the state of Arizona Office of the Attorney General and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the fiscal year 2022 Victims Rights Program Award, AG number 2022-044, in the approximate amount of $44,822 on behalf of the Glendale Police Department. Item 25, resolution number R-21-77, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting this notice of intention to increase water and sewer users' charges, setting a public hearing on proposed increases and filing written reports supporting the proposed increases with the city clerk. Item 26, resolution number R-21-78, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a development agreement with Cereval Development LLC, a Delaware limited liability company in the West Glendale service area for street-in-loo fees and street infrastructure. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Okay, so we have to, our agenda's not, okay, well, we need to do items on the consent, items two through 19 and item number 21. All in, can I get a motion? Let's do it that way.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we approve consent agenda items two through 19 and 21, as well as consent resolutions 22 through 24 and 26.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I guess we do have to do a roll call on this. No, we don't. Consent, okay. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Appears ayes have it, do have it, that motion passes. So now let's go backwards to item 20. That is the one that you had asked.
Just for a separate vote, Mayor.
Right. Okay, so we'll do a roll call on item number 20. I do need a motion for that, please.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we approve item number 20 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion does carry. So now moving on to item 25. You would like that discussed, or you'd like a brief description?
I would like to have the presentation, being that this is a notice of intent. I feel that we need to actually have the presentation since we're literally notifying residents. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report is Assistant City Manager Vicki Rios.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is what is commonly referred to as a notice of intention to increase water and sewer rates. The purpose of this item is to notify the public of the council's intent to increase those rates and set a date for the public hearing, which, if you move forward with this item, will have the public hearing occur on October 26, 2021, which is also at the same time that we would, that council then would vote on the actual rate increase if it continues to move forward at that point. It also lets the public know that there is a report on file, it will be on file with the Clerk's office and also available on the city's website, that supports those rate increases and explains and gives the financial background on the need for those rate increases. And with that, I'll answer any questions that council may have. Mr. Johnson is also available if you have questions of him.
Go ahead.
Honestly, Mayor, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say that I support the, I'm going to be voting yes on the resolution to notice Glendale residents of the intent to increase water rates, but I am not going to be in support of a five-year rate increase. With the current conditions on the Colorado River, I don't think we have any certainty about the cost of water, among other things, with the supply chains and other things happening in our market right now. So when this is presented, I support a two-year, as we've done the last several rate increases. We've approved a two-year rate increase. We can adopt the five-year plan and then reevaluate, at least, and this is my opinion, in two years, and assess where we are. There's going to be a shortage declared on the Colorado River. I believe it's going to happen this week or next week, whenever it is. Mr. Councilmember Turner would probably know better than I, but there are some serious problems, and CAP, they're going to be, we're not going to be getting our water supply cut, I believe, but they're going to cut, they're going to be delivering less water, but their cost to deliver water is not going to decrease. So the, what's going to happen, I think it's inevitable that the cost of water is going to increase. So I feel like it's more prudent to approve two years' worth of rates, so that's where I will be when this comes forward. But the reason I pulled it is so I could say that, and then also that we literally have a presentation to notify residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so can we get a motion for item 25? Where did he get that?
Mayor?
Where?
I move we approve consent resolution number 25.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff for item number 25. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, so item 27?
Authorization to enter into a services agreement with Forensic Technology, Inc. for an integrated ballistics identification system, warranty, and protection plan.
We have any questions on item 27? Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move we enter into the services agreement with Forensic Technology, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended actions. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 28, please?
Award of IFB 21-50, authorization to enter into an agreement and approve expenditure of funds to purchase firefighter turnout gear from L.N. Curtis &amp; Sons.
Okay, I have no speaker cards on this item. We need explanation for anybody? No? Okay, any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 28?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item number 28, award of IFB 21-50.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Item, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 29, please?
Award of IFB 21-50, authorization to enter into an agreement and approve expenditure of funds to purchase firefighter turnout gear from Matlick Enterprises, doing business as United Fire Equipment Company.
Any explanations necessary for the council? Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 29, award of IFB 21-50. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, a second from the Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 30?
Award of IFB 21-50, authorization to enter into an agreement and approve expenditure of funds to purchase firefighter turnout gear from Whitmer Public Safety Group, Inc.
Anybody need anything?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
It appears to me that both item 29 and 30 are to award IFB 21-50. Is that correct? Same IFB number?
All three of them are.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a multi-award IFB, so we receive more than one bid, and they're making more than one award. Some of our bids are written that way so that we can award to multiple contractors at the same time.
Thank you. Yeah, they're all exactly the same. Right. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I have no speaker cards on this item. Can I get a motion to approve item 30?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the award for IFB 21-50.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 31, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Consolidated Electrical Distributors, doing business as AZ Electric Supply for industrial and non-industrial electrical and process SCADA Controls Equipment, Parts, Supplies, and Tools.
Okay, any questions from the council? Any concerns? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 31?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 31, authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Consolidated Electrical Distributors.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Please.
On this item and the following item. They are four-year, five-year contracts, as is my habit and practice. I vote no on five-year contracts.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 32, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Elliott Electric Supply, Inc. for industrial and non-industrial electrical and process SCADA Controls Equipment, Parts, Supplies, and Tools.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, no presentation necessary. Can I get a motion?
Oh, yes, Mayor, I'm sorry. I move we enter into the linking agreement with Elliott Electric Supply, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor. Any concerns or questions from the council? Hearing none. We'll conduct a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 33, please?
Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Plaza Del Rio Management Corporation to provide consulting services regarding development opportunities for city-owned property located at the southeast corner of 95th Avenue and Cardinals Way.
Okay, any questions from the council? You have a presentation?
Mayor, members of the council, we have studied this in study session. Be glad to give a presentation if needed. Otherwise, I believe everybody's familiar with what the action is.
Okay. I don't see anybody asking or looking for further explanation, so can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we approve authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Plaza Del Rio Management Corporation.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from the Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. During my tenure on this council, I've never been presented with a professional services agreement of this nature, and I spent quite a bit of time over the weekend reading and researching this agreement, and Monday morning, I emailed the city manager with several questions, hopeful that the answers would help clarify some things for me. Last evening, I received his response, and I'm going to read just three of the questions and answers that I received. One of the questions I asked was, on the special procurement request form, it says that it stated that a good faith review of available sources has been conducted, and there is only one known or practical source for the required items. My question was, please provide documentation of available sources reviewed. The question was, please, the response to that question was, please see the attached rationale for the special procurement in response to question one. I'd already read the special procurement, that's why I spent this much time making these questions, and the city manager's response was, I felt, as city manager, I felt that the special skill sets and experience would be critical to seeing this vision manifest, the ability to self-perform Class A office space, and it is my recommendation to the council that we use a special procurement process to ensure that grand vision is realized. I don't have a problem with that, but that's not what was written under the reason for the special procurement. So my second thing I'd like to quickly read is, I, this was not included in the 21-22 year fiscal year budget or the 21-22 CIP. So I asked, are any project costs for this are not included in the budget of the CIP? Where will the necessary funding to move forward come from? The answer to the question, and by the way, on August, I believe on August 24th, are going to be items on the agenda that have costs associated with them. So I want to know where is the money coming from and what will be not funded because we're paying for this? The answer was, if there are costs incurred during the fiscal 21-22 year budget, staff will identify funding sources to be used. Well, my question was, I want to know what the funding sources are. The last thing I want to say is, I went back to the minutes from the workshop where the presentation happened on June 22nd, and I'm reading this from the minutes of the workshop. Councilmember Tomachoff asked if Plaza Companies was offering an all-or-nothing concept or would be open to multiple options on how to move forward. Mr. Phelps said Plaza Companies would analyze options and return to council with recommendations. Councilmember Tomachoff asked if there would be concepts that did not include Class A office space. Mr. Phelps said all opportunities would be explored based on market needs. My last question was, when will Plaza Company complete their analysis of options and return to council with recommendations? The answer I got was, no vertical construction will take place without council approval. Such approvals will include the appropriate justification for council consideration, no answer to when we will be presented with options and recommendations. Unfortunately, my questions were not answered, without clarity for when and if options and recommendations will be returned to council, as the city manager stated in the June 22nd workshop, where the project funding will come from, and what will not be funded as a result of this, and the stated reason for the special procurement can not be documented. Unfortunately, Mayor, I will not be able to support this. This is basically based on the city's side of what's happening here, nothing else, but I feel like, for me, the i's have not been dotted and the t's have not been crossed, and so I'm unable to support it. At this time, I vote nay.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote, Mayor.
Turn your microphone on, go ahead.
Maybe I should get closer. Thank you. My concerns with this proposal relate to regarding the information that's burdened presented for us to make our decisions, that there's a lack of any measurable deliverables, there's a lack of any certain timeframe by which we would get those deliverables, and that I don't feel that the reasons provided for declaring this a sole source award are justified and meet the requirements, and therefore, I vote nay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Item 34, I do have one speaker card on that, so if we can go ahead. Ms. Bauer, if you'll introduce item 34, please.
Resolution number R-21-79, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona by approving general plan amendment GPA 21-02 for property located south of the southeast corner of 51st Avenue and Peoria Avenue, ordinance number O-21-49, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located south of the southeast corner of 51st Avenue and Peoria Avenue from R16, C2, and C3 to R2 mixed residence, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on tonight's action item is Tabitha Perry, our interim planning manager.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. This request before you this evening is to approve a minor general plan amendment to change the land use designation from general commercial and medium density, three and a half to five dwelling units to the acre, to medium-high density, which is eight to 12 dwelling units to the acre. And approve, it's not showing on your screen yet, and approve a rezoning application to change the zoning district from R16, C2, and C3 to R2 for mixed residence. The vacant site is approximately 17.7 acres in size and located south and east of the southeast corner of 51st and Peoria Avenues. For directional context, the proposal is located approximately three miles northeast of City Hall. The general plan shows surrounding land use designations of medium density and general The zoning map shows surrounding zonings consisting of residential and commercial. The area provides context of the surrounding area, noting the property to the south is platted for a 86-lot residential subdivision but has not been developed. If the applications are approved, the conceptual site plan depicts the site will be developed as a gated 197 single-story detached rental community consisting of one to three bedrooms, development projected to contain a total of approximately 7.6 acres of open space, which is basically 44% of the site. Amenities includes a pool, jacuzzi, tot lot, dog park, with dog wash station, among other Here's an example of the proposed elevation design. The public involvement included completion of the citizen participation process where notification was sent to property owners within 300 feet, as well as individuals on the interested parties list. The applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting with general questions regarding road improvements and landscaping. Staff conducted an analysis and determined the proposal would result in a quality development product, which is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan, by promoting infield development, by providing a variety of housing types. These cases was heard before planning commission on August 5th. There were no oppositions expressed during the meeting. meeting. One commissioner expressed concerns regarding the access point along 51st Avenue, which resulted in an additional stipulation, as noted in the staff report. Planning commission recommended approval of both cases, GPA 21-02 as written, and ZON 21-02 with eight stipulations, as noted in the staff report. Unless council would like for me to read all eight stipulation, this concludes the presentation. The applicant is present, he and I are both prepared to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to go ahead and open up a public hearing, and then we'll take some questions and statements. So, the public hearing is now open on item 34, resolution number R-21-79, and ordinance number 021-49. And we have one speaker card here, Dennis Godfrey. Sir, you have three minutes. If you would state the city you live in, if it's Glendale, and then the district that you live in, if you know it. If not, just your crosswords, I don't need your address, sir. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Dennis Godfrey. I live in Glendale. I live on 50th Avenue, due north of, of this proposed site. Neighbors have been long interested in seeing some development there. I'm not sure that we're overly excited about rental units being there, but it looks like a reasonably good project. I'm interested in knowing what the 55-foot half-street development would do. Is that an additional lane, or an additional two lanes? I'm also interested in traffic patterns. What's the, the way that people are going to get to and from their, their homes in this development? But in general, I welcome this development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then I understand that the applicant is here to speak on this item. If, if you would, sir, please come up. I would ask that you'd state your name, who you represent. If you don't live in Glendale, just tell us the city you live in. And if, if you can, if you maybe address what he just had brought up, that'd be awesome.
Yes.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Brennan Ray, 1850, North Central, here on behalf of the applicant next Metro Communities. Getting specifically to the questions that were asked by Mr. Godfrey. In terms of the dedication, 55 feet, if I remember right, that is for Peoria Avenue. And what that is, is really a cleanup. Peoria, as we've worked with staff, is built to its fullest capacity. And so, this additional requirement for us to dedicate right of way is merely a cleanup. There were some gaps in the previous dedication that took place. But through working with town sta, or city staff, there is no plans to improve Peoria Avenue beyond that 55 feet. The 55 feet encompasses what is there today. Secondly, with respect to traffic patterns, I'm not sure that I fully understand the question, but in terms of the way the site has been designed, our primary access is off of Peoria, and we do have a secondary access point off of 51st Avenue. As I mentioned, we've worked closely with planning staff, and through that process, this has been vetted by the traffic engineering department. We have prepared a traffic study and submitted that with this application. And to our knowledge, everybody's great and good, comfortable with the access points and the way this site is intended to function.
Okay. Any questions from our council?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, I did have a question. I'm, I'm looking at your conceptual site plan, and I see on the, it'd be the corner of 51st and Peoria, the north, I guess, northwest corner of the parcel, and it says tenant garage. What is, what is that?
Through the mayor, councilmember Tomachoff, within this development, there are a number of parking spaces. We're providing a little bit more than code requires. But what is able to happen is, there are residents that if they choose to pay an additional fee, are able to have an enclosed garage. Everyone is provided a covered parking space, but again, for that additional fee, there is the ability to have a garage.
Okay. So, Mayor, if I could, so that's going to be basically, is it going to have like a fence around it and be part of the development, then? It'll, I'm...
Mayor...
I'm just wondering what it'll look like from 51st and, and Peoria, if it's going to be, you know, like, a part of the community, the community is going to be, it's going to be gated, so I'd imagine that the garage is going to be within the gate. It's just hard, hard for me. It's really tiny writing, even with my glasses, I'm having a hard time seeing it, so.
Sure. In terms of where various, the garages are internal to the site.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor. Thank you. I'm interested in 49th Avenue, which is the eastern side of this development. My recollection now is that that's a half-street currently. Will the developer be finishing that off? And is that the dedication of right-of-way that maybe was mentioned earlier?
Through the mayor, councilmember Turner, yes, we are required to complete the western half of 49th Avenue. During our neighborhood meeting, that was the primary topic of discussion, is what we were going to do to that particular street. And so, we will complete our half, curb gutter sidewalk, and things along that nature. I'd forgotten the second part of your question, I apologize, councilman.
I was wondering if that was maybe where the right-of-way dedication was coming into play.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Turner, again, the stipulation, I think, that was referenced is stipulation two, I don't know if it's still on the screen, but it's in stipulation two in the staff report, that requires 55 feet of cleanup along Peoria. There's an additional, I believe, 45 feet of right-of-way that's going to be dedicated along 51st Avenue. Again, as I understand it, that's cleanup type of dedications that are necessary. And then obviously, we are to provide, there is a stipulation for the right-of-way dedication along 49th Avenue as well.
Thank you. And Mayor, if I may, it appears to me that, from the, again, from the site map, that we've been shown that you have two major entrance exit points, one onto 51st Avenue, and the other onto Peoria Avenue, and no exits, emergency or otherwise into the neighborhoods?
Through the mayor, councilmember Turner, that is correct.
Thank you. And there's some question about egress in and out of the 51st Avenue entrance? Could you explain what the question there is?
Sure. Through the mayor, councilmember Turner, one of the questions that was raised by one of the commissioners at the planning commission meeting last week, concerned safe movement out of 51st Avenue. It was his belief, based on his experience in the area, that that entrance should be limited to a right-in, right-out only, currently in his plan for full movement. That is something that, as we've gone through the process, our traffic engineer prepared a report, submitted that to the city, the city reviewed that, and course of reviewing this application. And that report, and the city's determination concluded that a full movement access is appropriate at that location, and that it didn't need to be limited to right-in, right-out only. Following that discussion at the commission, we agreed to go back and take additional look at it, and really defer to the professional staff, who look at that on a day-in, day-out basis. I drive a car a lot, but that by no means makes me an expert in traffic engineering, and safety, and stuff like that. And so, we will defer that to them. And I think that's the additional stipulation number eight, that Ms. Perry referenced in her presentation, is included in the resolution before you.
Mayor, if I may continue. So, stipulation number eight is in the resolution. Of course, this is a zoning event, but the determin, the final determination on traffic will be made in the future. Would that be a decision the council will make when we do the final plat review, or when might that happen?
Through the mayor, councilmember Turner, I would certainly defer that question to staff. I believe that as we are going back through the process, and it could be at CDs and stuff like that, that staff will again review that. But I do not believe, and again would defer to staff, that that determination as to whether that 51st Avenue access should be right-in, right-out, is something that would come back before this council for your approval.
You do not think it would be, or you think it would be?
I, Mayor, councilmember Turner, I do not think it would be.
Well, it comes to us as a recommendation from our planning commission, so I would like to hope that, that we do participate in the final. But that's, that's down the road, that's not tonight. So, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Tell me your name again.
Brennan Ray.
Sir, I appreciate your professionalism, thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's all questions we have for you. If you have any time at all, you may speak with Mr. Godfrey, if he has any other questions for you. But it sounds like, it sounds like a good plan. So, with that, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 34, resolution R-21-79?
Yes, Mayor. I move, reprove, resolution number R-21-79.
Second.
We have a motion from the vice mayor, second from councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you call?
Mayor, have a comment?
Not how do you call, how do you vote?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I am, like Mr. Godfrey over here, a long time coming. I didn't realize that I'd be in a position to vote for such a development, in a location that's been vacant for many years. I think at its height, it was, I think, some kind of track for horses. And then there was a nursery that didn't make, and a little strip mall there. So, this is a long time coming. I'm glad somebody spent some time to invest in this area. And I know for those neighbors there, it's not my district, but they've been waiting for some improvement in that area for a very long time. Good work, great design, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Generally, I do not support build-for-rent communities. And I have a list of reasons why I do not. But in this particular case, there are times when build-for-rent is appropriate. This is a mile away from Glendale Community College. Many of the people who attend, not many, but certainly a certain portion of population that attends GCC, is looking for rental space. And, and if you've ever driven the area, you know that the number of rental apartments are, are not very abundant. So, I think this will provide another opportunity for students who are attending GCC and need to rent a place to live that's close by to their, their school needs. So, in this particular circumstance, I do support this build-for-rent, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote? Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote, Mayor.
Go ahead.
As long as everybody else is waxing nostalgic, I grew up more or less in the area, and it's been known over time as both Saraval Farms and Harrelson Stables. Really a very interesting place. It's obviously, like much agriculture, you know, falls under, under development. But perhaps one of its biggest claims to fame is that it was the preferred stable for the Budweiser Clydesdales anytime they came to town. So, a lot of, long-time Glendale residents may remember the Clydes, the Budweiser Clydesdales being stabled out there many times. And with that, I vote yes.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Yes. Mayor, I just want to comment on my historian. I knew you were excited about that Budweiser.
It's the Clydesdales, not the Budweiser.
Make it clear. It is in my district, and I appreciate all the kind words from councilmembers. It's going to be a fine addition to the Cactus District, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Chair votes aye, the motion does carry unanimous. And again, Mr. Godfrey, thank you so much for coming out, sir. With that, can I get a motion on item 34, ordinance number 021-49?
Yes, Mayor. I move, reprove ordinance 21-49.
Second.
We have a motion from the vice mayor, second from councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 35 for us, please?
Resolution number R-21-80, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona, by approving general plan amendment GPA 21-04, for property located at the northeast corner of 67th Avenue and Greenway Road. Ordinance number O-21-50, an ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at the northeast corner of 67th Avenue and Greenway Road, from C2, general commercial, and R3, multiple residence, to R5, multiple residence, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report is interim planning manager, Tabitha Perry.
There you go. Ms. Perry, pull the microphone really close to your mouth, if you would. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and council, this is a request for approval of a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from general commercial to high-density residential, which would be 12 to 20 dwelling units to the acre. And approve a rezoning application to change the zoning district from C2 and R3 to R5, multiple residence. The approximately 9.4 acre vacant site is located at the northeast corner of 67th Avenue and Greenway Road. For directional context, the proposal is located approximately six miles northwest of City Hall. The general plan shows surrounding land uses designations of high-density residential. The zoning map shows surrounding zonings consisting of residential and commercial. The area provides context of the surrounding area. If the applications are approved, the site will be developed for a gated, multi, multiple-family residential complex, consisting of 12 buildings at two and three stories, for a total of 182 units, with appropriate amenities such as a pool and a dog park. Here's, here is an example of the proposed building elevation design. The public involvement included completion of the citizen participation process, where notification was sent to property owners within 300 feet, as well as individuals on the interested parties list. There were general questions from residents with an overall support of the project. Also, staff received an email of support on August the 4th. Staff conducted an analysis and determined that the amendment is consistent with the policies and objectives of the city's general plan, zoning ordinance, and residential design and development policies, that the project will promote infield development within the portions of the city where infrastructure is already available, and that it contributes to the supply and diversity of housing. And lastly, overall, favors to public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Glendale. Planning commission recommended approval of both applications on August the 5th. And the approval was for GPA 21-02 as written, and ZON 21-02 with seven stipulations, as noted in the staff report. Unless council would like for me to read all seven stipulations, this concludes the presentation. The applicant is present. He and I are both prepared to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Before we take questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing, and then we'll start from there. Public hearing is now open on item 35, resolution number R-21-80, and ordinance number 021-50. I don't have any speaker cards on this. Is there any member of the council that has any issues that they'd like to bring up, or questions they'd like answered? Go ahead, sir.
I just had a few questions that I don't think Tabitha could answer these. It has to do with mostly traffic. This is in the area of Cactus High School, and that particular corner is quite busy. And I've had concerns and complaints from some citizens about the, the traffic on that corner. Has there been a traffic study completed that, that shows what impact that would have?
Ms. Perry, I understand that the applicant's here. I don't know if they'd like to speak or not. So, we'll leave that up to you.
Okay. Mayor and council, just to answer councilmember Melner's question, that a TIS was received, and our transportation department has reviewed that, and there were some revisions to take place with that report. But those issues were taken in consideration with the study.
Okay. I noticed there were several stipulations requiring an extra lane, turn lane, and those kind of things. Has, was there any, was the traffic signal itself addressed in the turn lanes of the traffic signal, and/or the way the traffic signal is currently set up, and any, any way to expedite, you know, putting in, for example, a flashing yellow turn signal and that kind of thing?
Mayor, councilmembers, unfortunately, I'm not prepared to answer that question directly, but I know that it was part of the report. Hopefully, Mr. Frock can answer that question for you.
Okay. Do you know what the timeframe is of this project, as far as how soon they plan to move forward with it?
Mayor and council, I'll defer that to the applicant.
All right.
Mr. Frock, would you like to... Mr. Frock, would you like to come up? And I know you've done this a few thousand times, but state your name, where you're from, who you represent. You have three minutes. Well, actually, no.
Yeah, I'm a newbie. Mayor and council, good evening. It's great to be here. I'm pitching in tonight. The applicant for this project is Dave Sheshevsky. He's a great zoning attorney. He's out of the country, and he asked if I could hopefully not mess up the project tonight.
Raise your microphone up a little bit. There you go.
Sorry about that. Thank you. With me tonight is the actual developer of the project from Modern Living, Dave Dewer. If you want a presentation from him...
I think a couple of questions that Mr. Melner had is really what he's looking for right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, councilmember Melner, and the rest of the council. With respect to the traffic, we actually feel that eliminating the commercial at this corner will reduce the overall traffic impacts. There already is a westbound and northbound.
Excuse me, Mayor, point of order. I'm having difficulty hearing you, Mr. Frock.
I'll try to speak up.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. There's already a westbound right turn lane for people that want to, I think the council understands that Greenway does not really continue on the normal grid system west to 75th Avenue in Peoria. So if you take, I don't know what you can see on your screen, but I'm looking down at the aerial photo that was presented. So most of the traffic, excuse me, that's westbound on Green, there it is, thank you, westbound on Greenway, if you're not going into the neighborhoods to the west, to your home, or some of the shopping that's available, most of the turning movements are going to be either north or south on 67th Avenue. So like Tabitha said, this will be a gated community. We feel that the impact is actually less by eliminating the commercial and doing the residential. On the site plan itself, and we brought this up Thursday night, a planning commission right on the immediate corner, rather than having a pad, a commercial pad, we're going to incorporate that into, it is incorporated into our site plan with a dog park and open space. So we actually feel this will be one of the best-looking corners at this intersection. With respect to the traffic signal, I don't remember, I live a couple miles north of here in the Choya District. I don't remember if there is the lagging laps or the flashing yellows, but the pole stands and such for the existing traffic signal, I do not believe need to be moved once the property is developed. Your question, Mayor, councilmember Malnar, in terms of timing, hopefully we get approved tonight. We would be under construction in early 2022.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Just to follow up, and it's really more, I guess, for staff, that turn is Cactus High School, and it's a very, very busy turn during high school time, and it backs up very, very far. And so the reason I ask these questions is I'd like to see us expedite while we're doing this whole process and putting new lanes in, that we go ahead and move forward on the flashing yellow light on that intersection rather than waiting. I know it was put in the plan, it may be a year or two down the road, and may coincide, but I'd like to make sure it gets done while this is being processed.
Mayor, councilmember Malnar, I'll work with engineering and transportation with reference to this project and focus on the intersection with the possibility of expediting that flashing.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 35, resolution number R21-80?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve resolution number R21-80.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Melner, a second from councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Just like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Again, I appreciate the developer and the owners moving forward on this project. I think it's going to be a great project for the area. It's one that is taking a dusty lot and turning it into something that's going to look great. So I really appreciate this moving forward as an infill project within the district. Thank you. And I vote aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Can I get a motion on item 35, ordinance 021-50?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve ordinance number O21-50.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Melner, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to ordinances. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 36 or ordinance 021-51?
Ordinance number O21-51, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending Glendale City Code, Chapter 25, nuisances, Article 3, administration and enforcement, Section 36, enforcement general, Section 42, court ordered abatement, and Section 43, appeal of court decision and setting forth an effective date.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on both items, number 36 and 37, is Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for council to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 25 of the general code as read in by the clerk, essentially creating a provision for court ordered abatement. This would be infrequent in use. I think in the last five years, there've been a handful of cases where this would have come in handy in certain cases, criminal cases, where the owner occupant is either found incompetent to stand trial or is otherwise unable to be heard in court, and so it becomes very difficult for code and the prosecutor's office to find them responsible. We've seen significant delays in those cases and blight continue in a neighborhood for what I would consider to be an unreasonable amount of time. This ordinance, which was discussed on April 27th in workshop, would give that tool, the tool of code enforcement, so they could control this blight much faster and eradicate these problems much faster. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Can I get a motion on ordinance number 021-51, item 36?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number O21-51.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Tomachoff, a second from councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 37, please?
Ordinance number O21-52, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending Glendale City Code, Chapter 24, motor vehicles and traffic, Article 6, speed regulations, Section 24-94, unnecessary vehicle noise, and Chapter 25, nuisances, Article 8, miscellaneous nuisances, Section 25-67, vehicular noise violations, and setting forth an effective date.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for council to adopt an ordinance amending chapters 24 and 25 as it relates to vehicle noise, and that is engine noise. In our conversation in workshop on March 21st, this council made a distinction between engine noise and radio or music coming from a vehicle, and the current code reads that engine noise is a criminal offense. This council made the recommendation, and I'm bringing it forward tonight, that the first two offenses in a 12-month period be viewed as civil, the first fine amount being fairly insignificant, and then the second offense in a 12-month period, a little heavier civil fine, and then a third and subsequent offense in a 12-month period would then become criminal. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. St. Jean, when you say engine noise, is that just the noise that comes out of the exhaust, or is that also can be the squealing of tires? I mean, I understand that we already have reckless driving as far as something that can be enforced, so I would think that that would cover that, but I don't know if anybody lives closer to a main road than I do, and I'm totally blessed that I live so close to Phoenix that I get all Phoenix's vehicular noise. And that's sarcasm at its best, and it's bad. And I just, you know, I don't know how in the world that we would have enough officers to be able to enforce this, although I'd welcome any opportunity to do something. But again, it's a combination of tire squeal, and it's a combination of the music, if you want to call it that, the loud, really low bass that literally vibrates my entire home. And these are people two blocks away. And then, of course, the noise from either motorcycles or crotch rockets or, you know, the cars with the, whether they have exhaust or not, I don't know. So I'm just trying to figure, is it only the noise that comes from the exhaust? Is that...
Mayor, members of the council, this would deal with only the noise that comes from the engine and the exhaust system of the vehicle. There are other codes and statutes in Arizona, revised statutes, to deal with the squealing of tires, racing, radio noise, or that low thump that you hear from the radio of vehicles. There are other codes that deal with that. This is specific to people that choose to modify their vehicles so that they sound louder, if you will, that muscle car sound. And they've, in most cases, they've modified the vehicle on their own to create that sound, and this ordinance would allow law enforcement an opportunity to hold them accountable at a civil level. Currently, it is a criminal violation in our code.
Okay, so now my next question is, what's acceptable? Is there a decibel that's acceptable? Are we going to have decibel meters inside the officer's vehicles that can measure that? Because without that, what might be too loud for you may not be loud enough for me.
Mayor, members of the council, our noise ordinance is not a decibel-level ordinance, it is a distance ordinance. So if the engine can be heard from a distance of, and I don't recall the exact language, but I believe it's 250 feet or greater, then it would be considered a violation or could be looked at as a violation.
Okay, and you say it's 250 feet?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm not 100% sure on the exact distance. I believe it's in the neighborhood of 250 feet.
Okay, does anybody have that? I'd be curious exactly what that is.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd have to look it up. So I could look it up, it would take me a minute.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, is this intended for individuals who have vehicles that have modified their engines and vehicles to have that sound, that are being a nuisance? And the reason why I'm asking is, there's two different vehicles out there nowadays. There's many vehicles, but there's the import vehicles that have modified their mufflers that are very loud, and they drive, when they're driving normal, it's not bad, but when they accelerate and they sit at a stoplight and they do that, those are the nuisance. And then you have the more of the old 60s, 70s model vehicles that have what they call a cam in there, and it adjusts the intake and exhaust valves, and it has a pretty decent sound.
Is that what you have?
Are we going to go after those individual, or is it just even those if they're being a nuisance?
So Mayor, councilmember Aldama, this would be complaint-driven, so officers wouldn't go out and proactively look for these types of violations. But in instances where a neighbor has perhaps spoken to their neighbor several times about using their vehicle that has a loud engine late in the evening, those are the type of complaints that we get. And when the officers go into the neighborhood and eventually make contact with the owner of the vehicle, there's a hesitancy to cite criminally.
Okay.
And it's that hesitancy that we're trying to get around by allowing the officers on a first offense to cite civilly with a fairly low dollar amount sanctioned.
Thank you for that clarification. I think this will help the police officers, but it'll help residents that are able now to make a call, because you can't do nothing right now. There's nothing you can do. They race up and down, and it's more of the import van, I have nothing against them, I think they're great cars, just they're the ones that are really loud and they're a nuisance. And then is this just in residential areas, or is this in like a light industrial area where a garage would need to bring the RPMs up loud enough that, or high enough that it'll make noise when a residential and a light industrial area border to each other? Would that cause problems with those?
Mayor, councilmember Aldama, there's no provision in the code that distinguishes the zoning, but it is, as I said, complaint-driven, and most people have an understanding of what occurs at a shop where they're working on vehicles. We get very, very, very few, if any, complaints about shops that are working on vehicles.
Well, I will promise not to be a nuisance, but I don't want to change the cam in my truck that I'm working on, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So now I'm completely confused, because from my understanding is we're basically giving, we're lowering the penalty, we're lowering the threat, we're saying it's not, instead of it's being a criminal complaint, it's a civil complaint, it's going to be like a parking ticket kind of a thing, and then if it's a repeat offender, would then go to a criminal complaint. So we're literally giving latitude, basically, to people like, okay, we're going to, and also that the officers aren't so hesitant to address it because they don't want to give somebody a criminal complaint for a loud vehicle. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because the questions confuse me. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Can I get a motion for ordinance 021-52, item 37?
Here.
Go ahead.
I move we pass and adopt ordinance O21-52.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Turner, a second from councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
As deaf as I am, I do vote aye on this one. It does pass unanimously. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 38, please?
Ordinance number O21-53, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing cash and appropriation balance transfers between budget items in the adopted fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Lisette Camacho, Director of Budget and Finance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to adopt an ordinance approving fiscal year 2021 budget amendments. The city's 2021 total budget appropriations across all funds remains unchanged with this action. Exhibit A contains the requested appropriation transfers between departments and funds. There are no cash transfers. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I do have one question. Ms. Camacho, on line, this is really tiny writing, line four, streets diff contingency to Pyramid Peak Water Treatment Plant expansion. Is this for the 67th Avenue project?
Mayor, members of the council, I'll defer that question to Mr. Johnson.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm trying to show Mr. Johnson the attachment, but are you talking about the $2.5 million going? So this, again, this is just appropriation transfer, just to clarify, and it's going to Pyramid Peak expansion? Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, members of the council, I just got clarification from Lisette. That's for a payment to McCarthy for the expansion of Pyramid Peak.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion on ordinance 021-53, item 38?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 021-53.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Clark, a second from councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on. Request for future workshop and executive session. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we hold the next regularly scheduled city council workshop on Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, at 2:30 PM in the city council chambers, to be followed by an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03.
Second.
I have a motion for the Vice Mayor, a second from councilmember Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, voting aye, appears I do have, but that motion carries. Any opposed, voting aye. Appears I just have, do have what that motion carries. Uh, now we're going to move on to council comments and suggestions. Mr. Aldama.
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Yes, Mayor. This week we learned that Officer Lonnie Durham succumbed to COVID. And I know that this council and the entire, uh, employee population of Glendale are holding he and his family in our hearts and in our prayers. But that also made me think that they, we had two other employees that died of COVID that I'm not sure that we ever mentioned by name or passed our condolences on to as well. And that would be Tom Pena, who was a driver, sanitation truck driver, and Montana Stark, who was sanitation fleet supervisor. And they should also be in our prayers and in our thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Uh, nothing further than that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Actually, one thing, Mayor. It's good to be back in the council chambers.
Yes.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I would just say, yes, it is good to be back in the council chambers. It's good to see you all again after almost six weeks. I wonder if perhaps something's happened to us that we all might need hearing aids and reading glasses. It's been a constant theme today, but just in case that, you know, it actually is the equipment that's letting us down and not our, our ears and eyes. Uh, hopefully that can be fixed before our next meeting here. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
What do you say?
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Mayor. Um, we had our, our free swim day at, uh, Roseland Pool with the fire department serving hamburgers and hot dogs and giving safety advice and, and demonstrations. And I want to thank Mayor Wyerson coming out and Councilmember Aldama. The community really appreciated it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Uh, and then the only thing, if, if you folks haven't noticed, uh, something that I'm actually really proud of, um, Councilmember Aldama, Vice Mayor Hugh and myself, uh, had a little bit of money left in our, uh, accounts and we were able to, uh, pay for, have installed and erected, uh, American flag, a POW flag and Arizona flag in front of, uh, our, uh, civic center. And, uh, is not necessarily a big deal as that may sound. Drive by it. It's really pretty. It's a, it's a point of pride. It's something that I, I, I know that I took an awful lot of pride in. So I want to thank the other council members for, uh, sharing with some of their budgets as far as making that happen. Uh, with that, uh, it, it, it is good to be back. So, uh, we're going to go ahead and move on to our last item, uh, citizens' comments. Uh, the next item is just that. Council makes this opportunity available, uh, to you, the citizens, to bring information and business before us, the council that's not on our printed agenda. The council is only able to act on matters that are on our printed agenda. Uh, but we can refer the matter to the city manager for follow-up in the future if necessary. If you're unable to speak, uh, from our podium, please signify, let us know, and we'll make sure that, uh, a microphone is brought to you if that's necessary. Uh, we're going to go ahead and start off with, uh, Mr. Dibler, uh, if you'll come up. Folks, you have three minutes. When you come up, I need you to state your name loud, uh, the city that you live in. If it's Glendale, the district, if you know it. If not, your crossroads. I don't want to know your address. Mr. Dibler, you know how it works. Go ahead, sir. You've got three minutes.
Hi. My name is James Diber. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. Last month I saw homeless individuals sleep, sleeping at the bus stop at 43th Avenue and PO Avenue near that Target Shopping Center. And homeless person asked me for money, but I refused. The person decided to try to attack me at the same intersection. In order to be safe, I decided to run to the nearby restaurants to be safe. Homeless individuals create a problem at the bus stop to make the person unsafe while waiting at the bus stop at night. The city of Phoenix removed a bus stop server at 27th Avenue and Northern Avenue due to the homeless problem. I would like to see the city of Glendale review bus stop server to make sure people are safe at the bus stop without getting the homeless in trouble with the law. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thanks, James. Craig Kirk. I hope I pronounced that right.
Good evening. Uh, just want to say thank you for your service and thanks to the police officers standing over there. Uh, my name's Craig Kirk and I live on 67th Avenue in Deer Valley and behind the fire station. And I'm here to talk about a 5G cell tower that was built up in, right behind, right behind my backyard. That's about 80 feet tall. And I would like to consider this. I've had extensive conversations with council, Councilwoman Tomachoff about this. And, uh, you can imagine the concerns I have for my family with that being built so close to my backyard. Not only me, but many, many other residents are also, uh, around and getting together. So I would like to try to see if we can consider this getting on this onto an agenda and for a vote to move this tower to a commercial area that, uh, with the proper, with the conversations with the attorneys, with the city attorney saying that needs, uh, cancellation, a vote, a cancellation and a one-year notice. And I would like to repeat, request that being on for the next agenda. Uh, I can't even, the property values have dropped immensely and the studies, there has been no studies on those 5G towers as far as the research I've done. Um, that's about it. Uh, I would like to add that to the next agenda for the next vote.
All right. We appreciate you coming in, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Next person, Bernadette Balagnini. I know I totally butchered that up, but you're up.
Mayor Wyerson, I ask that I speak.
Yep. I, I, I'm taking him just the way there, ma'am. Come on up.
I am Jessica Corey. I live in the historic Sands Estates in the Ocatillo District. I am also one of the organizers of the Save Our Alley's group. For those watching this meeting, I will give a brief history of our neighborhood. In the late 1950s, a part of the Manistee Ranch neighborhood was set aside for residential housing. Through the years, street by street, homes were built. Each home is unique. Added amenities were alleys. All utilities and waste collection was located in the alley. That has been very successful for over 60 years. We have the opportunity to be a model historical neighborhood. Then it was decided above our objections that recycling would be picked up in front of the houses. From then on, the push from the city was to eventually get everything picked up in front of our homes. As you can imagine, that has been frustrating for most of us. I was very interested to hear at the June 22nd city council workshop that there had been no objections to the alley closings. Many of us have reached out to city staff and elected officials to express our dismay. Several of us have spoken during public comments at the city council meetings. At an Ocatillo District meeting on January 30th, 2019, we were assured by a city spokesperson that the closings were to be voluntary and if the alley was closed, the bulk trash would still be picked up in the alley. Our residents deserve to know what the procedures are for closing alleys as they appear to have changed. They should know what percentage of the affected residents have to agree. They should be assured that city employees will not be trying to influence their decisions. They should know that they won't wake up and find their alley closed. We are compiling the results of our survey that was sent to Sands Estates residents, but the preliminary results show that a majority responding do not want their alley closed, that some alleys were closed before they were informed, that many were closed without their consent, and that all wanted bulk trash to be picked up in the alleys, and almost all wanted a meeting with Councilman Aldama. That meeting should include Public Works Director and/or the Assistant Public Works Director. At that meeting, guidelines could be provided that would help us to be good users of the alley and contact numbers for city employees that could help with specific problems such as the homeless and illegal dumping. You don't treat a sprained ankle by amputa- amputating your leg. Some of you may remember city programs that got out of control, selling Foothills Branch Library, selling the Glendale City Art Collection in an auction in July, and the constant threat to irrigation service. These were successfully stopped by city participation. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Bernadette Balagnini and I am a resident of Ocatillo District at 58th Avenue and Northern. And I just want to say thank you to Jessica for putting this, the questionnaire together for the residents because we feel that we need to speak up now before the decision is out of our hands. So, here we go. Our group sent out a mailing that included an informational letter and questionnaire to all Sands Estates residents. We have been heartened by their responses. Not everyone is in favor of keeping the alleys open, but they were appreciative that they were at last being heard. We also sent copies to each city council member, the Public Works Director, the Assistant Public Works Director, and the city manager. And not one of those public officials or city employees has contacted us. All decisions should not be made only by the city council and city staff. The residents should be a part of the decision also. Taxpayers should have a place at the table. So, we would like to share a few comments from our neighbors. We appreciate their input, input and taking the time to fill out the questionnaire. The first comment that came to me is close to my heart and what I really believe. The comment, "We have a beautiful neighborhood. Why wreck it by putting trash on the streets? This neighborhood has a vintage charm." Another comment, um, "No one wants to see their neighbor's trash in the neighborhood street. I walk the neighborhood and when I see the trash in the street, it's not a pretty sight. So unnecessary when we have the convenience of an alley." Another comments regarding the city notifications. We called the city, but we're given no satisfactory, satisfactory answers. Uh, I recall notification of the alley being blocked off, but not of information being provided if we had a choice or not.
Five seconds left.
Oh, okay. So, again, um, I'll just say two things, too. Some neighbors have, um, garages or carports that face the alley. So they have a hard time if that alley is closed. They're going to have to get out of their car, open the gate, drive through, uh, go back, close the gate, and then do the whole same process back again.
Thank you.
So thank you for listening. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Difficult to read this one. It looks like Sarah Vannan. I, I'm sure I butchered that, but-
No, you did not.
Okay. Perfect. If you would, uh, please state your name, the city you live in, uh, the district that you live in, if you know it. If not, just your crossroads, not your address, sir. You have three minutes.
All right. Good evening, Councilman and, uh, Mayor. This is Sarah Vannan Madhavanan. I live in 59th and Union. Um, I wasn't planning to talk here. I just came in for my legal license. I'm opening a restaurant in 59th and Union. It's indeed a place. I just wanted to share some experience that I've been experiencing with this process. I'm a small business entrepreneur. Used to be an IT guy, um, kind of came out and then trying to open a business. Right now I have one in surprise. When I first, um, you know, started talking to people about I'm opening one in Glendale, a lot of people, especially contractors or businessmen, said city of Glendale is hard to deal with. I have no idea what that means. Um, and then the people I'm working with, they're super nice. I just want to give it off to Tammy Hicks, who's coordinating my, uh, license process. One thing I noticed was, a lot of things are happening in isolation. Um, you work with multiple department and they are not connected internally. Could be in the system, but I don't feel like it. So when I talk to somebody, I have to explain my whole, I know, the whole process again. Um, it could be easier if we have some sort of small business onboarding checklist or a meeting just to, you know, understand what my needs are and then what I need to do. I'm not a business guy, um, but it was a, a tough ride to understand what needs to be done when things are all set like years and years ago. I don't need to figure out everything on the move. It's been three months and I still don't, don't have my license because something comes of new every time. And I believe you don't want a small business to suffer, especially dur- during these tough times where it's really hard to, you know, open a new business. I would probably expect a lot of support. You know, I know people are supporting, but there's something missing. And I'm not an expert. I'll let you figure it out. Um, one thing I wanted to recommend was, the process is supposed, supposed to make things easier, but most of the time the process is making things difficult. For example, um, I'm, I'm, I'm taking over an existing restaurant space. So I'm not doing anything inside, nothing major. The seating I'm not touching, the kitchen plumbing, electrical, I'm not touching. But I'm an Indian restaurant. It used to be an American restaurant. So I need my kitchen equipments to be installed. It's not rocket science. Just connect the, you know, uh, plumbing hoses to a different equipment. I was told I need to apply for a permit. I did that early May and I got the approval last week. Go ahead and do it. So, why not, you know, I'm using licensed contractors and they are trained to do what's right. And if they do it right and then have somebody come and inspect whether I've done it right or not before you give me the license, this two and a half months hold just to, you know, look at something that I'm going to do. Is it right? Even though you're going to come and inspect later, is it necessary? That was holding me for a long time. I don't know. I mean, I'm not giving a lot of specifics or details. It just, I'm not frustrated. I'm just a little concerned. We can be a little bit more sensitive about small business onboarding here in Glendale. Um, and we really appreciate it. I'm sorry if I spoke anything wrong. That's not my intention. I just wanted to get myself out. Um, it's a cry inside that, you know, we are all family here. We're helping each other out. Um, and we are, we are willing to help. If you need more hands, I'm an IT guy. I can, I can do anything you guys want. I'm ready to help the city. A lot of people are willing to help. Short staff is a calm response wherever we go. I send an email. It takes three, four days to get a simple response. I call, nobody picks up. It, it's not city out anywhere. So, we need help. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And then, uh, this next one is even actually harder to read. I can't make out the person's name. It looks like Chad. Okay. You have three minutes, sir. Uh, state your name, uh, company. If you live in Glendale, where, if not, the city you live in.
I put Aubrey on there as well in the letters because we only have three minutes. I'm just going to let her speak.
Just state her name.
My name is Aubrey Denikamp. We live in Scottsdale and I work for Custom Holiday Lights as a manager. We are here today to discuss RFP 21-15, Murphy Park Holiday Light Display. We are here today versus when it was voted in, as it was voted in on an unscheduled meeting. And we did try to do a protest as well, but the hearing request was denied. We've jumped through many hoops to be here during the previous RFP as well as this one for the specific project. This past time, based on the scoring submittals, the city's committee requested us do an interview. To be honest, we were excited about it. We thought we were either tied up or had a good chance of winning. Um, we went through, did the process. They gave us four specific criteria to go through, which included the types of lights, displays, design plan, and the safety plan. All of this was concluded in our presentation as well as what we verbally discussed. Following the presentation, we saw the intent to award come out. We were disappointed to see that we did not win. Upon receiving the actual scoring, we were even more disappointed. Originally, after the RFP was submitted and the evaluations come out, we won by a total of 28 points. After the interview process, there was a shift favoring the other company Credit Management Group, who's also been the contractor for over 20 years post-interview. That's more than a 10% shift of 76 points out of 800. The new judging criteria mimic the original criteria verbiage- The new judging criteria mimic the original criteria verbatim in the 16 area judge, excuse me, areas judged. We don't think it's fair that the same criteria was rejudged with no different information being provided. To have a 10% swing almost, having us being the original winner, to changing here with no design changes, no opportunity to rebid or change our submittal, just doesn't add up to me. We've had other hurdles before, we've spoken with you guys before, actually regarding a previous RFP for this project, and we have, things just don't add up, and it almost appears to be at this point that someone inside just wants the same contractor to continue winning, and integrity-wise, we just don't think it's fair. Looking at it and talking to other contractors who are also in this industry locally, no one wants to bid on it. You get between one and three bidders at max for the past 20 years almost, and from talking to them, the reason is there's just not even a chance. And if that is the case, I don't understand why it's continuing to go out to RFP. We were really hoping that you guys can consider this, maybe review during the August 24th workshop, as I know it's not on the agenda for tonight. We'd be happy to do a presentation or supply any information needed to kind of go over our case. Do you have anything to add?
That's good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There'll be, being no further business before this council tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting with no objection from this council. Hearing none. Word adjourned.